Meeting of the Yardley Borough Council to order. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Legions to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic which stands
One nation, under God,
and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If Mary Anne can take our roll call.
Ms. Thompson?
Present.
Ms. Segal Morris?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Finer?
Here.
I see you. Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Curtin?
Present.
And Mr. Brea?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. At the record show that seven council members are in attendance. Looking around, I believe Mayor Harding is not with us, although he did send me an email he would be joining a little bit late this evening, so we do expect him later on. Next up on our agenda is community announcements. This would be the time during the meeting during which council members or members of the public, if you have an item to share for the public good, upcoming events, charities, things of that nature, now would be the time. So ask first, do any members of council have an item they'd like to share? All right, and hearing none, if there are any member of the public that would like to share a community announcement, use the raise hand feature to be recognized. All right, I don't see any there, so we will quickly move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. This is the portion of the meeting during which members of the public may address council regarding items that do not appear on the agenda. If you wish to address council regarding an item that does appear on our agenda, you'll be given the opportunity to do so during council's deliberation of that item. Members of the public are asked to please state their name and address for the record before their comment. And to be recognized again, please use the raise hand function in Zoom. I will then call on you, and also please note that public comment is limited to three minutes per person. So first off, I see Dr. Promutter. Go ahead, unmute yourself and your three minutes begins.
Thank you. Dawn Promutter, 18 West College Avenue. After the last meeting, you had an executive session. And when I asked what it was in reference to, you would not disclose that. You just said litigation.
It's so wrong on so many levels.
Excuse me?
I believe that was a member of the public. Continue.
Okay, um, so when I didn't get that information, I put in a right to know request, which was denied. But fortunately, I subsequently was able to discover that there were three separate lawsuits that have been filed against Yardley Borough and Yardley Borough members. I know you cannot, well, one is basically a federal civil rights action alleging corruption and cronyism engaged in by council and retaliation for complaints about unethical behavior. The federal lawsuit is seeking damages in excess of a million dollars. Now, I understand you cannot comment since you have been named in every single lawsuit, but I would like to bring up just three important issues. One, the lack of transparency. The fact that this council always goes out of their way to not inform residents of something this significant. I think that it should have been brought up. I can understand you can't go into details, but certainly should have been mentioned. The other thing is the liability. I think as a resident, we have a right to know what financial consequences these lawsuits may have for the borough. I don't know how it works. I don't know if insurance covers everything, even if you're found at fault. I don't know if it covers all the costs of being defended. It's just something that's, I think we need to know because obviously if insurance doesn't cover it, then all the residents of the town would be responsible for covering those costs. And then the third thing is addressing these serious allegations of corruption and cronyism, so that you're not sued again. This is not the first time you've heard this. You know I've brought this up several times over the years. I've brought in very significant evidence of this. They've been ignored. I'm not going to go into the details of this suit, but I think it's serious enough where it needs to be looked into. You cannot just keep ignoring these allegations. Right now, it's a civil suit, but it could become a criminal investigation. And then it wouldn't just be money. Then you'd have real skin in the game. So I think it's important that we find out more information about this somehow. And I would really appreciate it if you could find a way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Promutter. As you mentioned, we are limited in what we can discuss on all matters of a legal nature from council. That is a blanket policy that we hold, not in specific to any one incident. However, I will respond to a few limited things that I think it's perfectly fine for me to say. And the first is something I have said in these meetings before, which is that I can confidently say that this is a council that has not engaged in anything that could be called corruption or cronyism. And I issue that as a blanket statement. I have the highest faith in this council's ability and past performance when it comes to conducting business in the most ethical way possible. I believe that your questions about cost are warranted. So I will describe again the blanket insurance policy that is in place. And, you know, not in relation to any particular issue, but the borough does carry an insurance policy that would cover the extra legal costs should litigation take place. Beyond that, as you know, you can conduct or request records regarding invoices for specific payments. But just as a blanket statement, I will say there is an insurance policy in place. Moving on, is there any additional public comment tonight? Going once, going twice, don't see any, so I will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Our next item is consideration of the consent agenda dated for today, January 19th. That consists of two items. That's the approval of the minutes from our January 5th meeting and approval of the bills list for tonight, January 19th. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilperson Thompson, seconded by Councilperson McCann. Any discussion or questions from council? Discussion or questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Next item is over to Chief Kelly for the police report. Chief, I'm sorry, we didn't hear you there, but I think we're still probably having some audio issues. Oh, all right, well.
No, no report.
I'm getting through the little box in the window. Thank you, chief. All right, next up, we move to our engineer for project updates.
So we had a public works meeting tonight, and most of it was discussed during then. So I only really have one thing to announce, and that was earlier today, we were, we received approval of our erosion and sediment control apartment from Bucks County Conservation District for the sidewalk project. So that's very exciting. Things are moving forward.
It's good news. Thank you very much. That concludes the report. We will then move on to Manager Johnson for your report.
With the warmer temperatures, our public works contractors started working on any potholes. So if anybody sees anything for them, please advise the office so that we can get those addressed. There's not really that many. We do have a zoning hearing board at the end of this month for 162 Harper Avenue, and that is for a bathroom. And then also I heard back from Pico today. They're in the final review of our offer letter. And we should be hearing from them within the coming weeks, they said. So I'll keep you posted when I do hear something. And that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you, Manager Johnson. Any members of council have questions for a borough manager? All right, hearing none, we will keep moving right along. Next up is our solicitor's report.
Good evening. Andrew Griffin here from Curtin and Heathner, covering for Buck and Closer this evening. I have no report.
All right, thank you. That keeps it easy. I don't know if, I'm looking to see if Chris joined. I don't believe he did. So we will skip the mayor's report for now and move right into our council member reports. We will begin with Mr. Curtin.
Thank you, Chairman. No, no report.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
Liz already handled the good news, so Public Works has no reports.
All right, Ms. Segal Morris?
Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. For myself, also, this relates to sewer authority, no report. I believe we do still have a vacancy to fill on sewer authority. I think it's already, or Paula already, that application was received, but we have not taken any action on that thus far. Councilperson Thompson?
Yeah, I do have one item that I'm asking for action from council on tonight. So we did say we were gonna review the books from 2020 once we closed out the budget to see, you know, we had budgeted 37.5 to move into capital, but with the deficit, we weren't able to do that. But now that we have concluded the year, we did have stronger than anticipated real estate transfer taxes in December, so it's not much, but we would like to include a $1,500 transfer to capital reserve on the next bills list if council agrees. Every little dollar helps when it comes to our projects in the borough.
So that would just go next, next meeting's bills list?
Correct. So I'll just make a motion that we transfer $1,500 to capital reserve at the next meeting.
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Ross for that transfer of $1,500. Any discussion or questions from council? Any from the public? Call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, that's seven to zero.
Beyond that, General Government met this evening. We're continuing to work on our financial comprehensive plan. We have a strategy, an outline for how we're going to tackle that going forward. And then Councilperson Curtin is hosting the next floodplain seminar. If you'd like to give the date and time of that, Matt?
Yep, we're targeting Wednesday, February 3rd, be another Zoom at 7:00 PM. And we'll be, we have two local realtors, great people who live and work in the borough, one of whom actually is also in the floodplain. So they'll have some great content, and we'll plan to work with Paula to get notification out, you know, through email to advertise it.
Yeah, this one's called buying and selling in the floodplain. That's all I have to report.
All right, thank you. Mr. McCann?
I'll just say that as the inauguration is tomorrow, and, you know, I do want to just take a moment just to say that I do hope we move into a new age of politics where we treat one another civilly, that we have civil discourse, that we all come together, whether Republican, Democrat, or independent, that we kind of move past it, because I do think, you know, this council, I'm proud to have served in this council for over a year, and I really enjoy it. I want to reiterate that point that David made, that everyone here gives up their time and volunteers their time on this council to better the community that we live in. And some of these aspersions that are thrown our way aren't necessary, and I do think we are serving with, you know, truly trying to be ethical and transparent and do good for the community. So I just wanted to say that I'm proud of all the work that we do here and proud to serve with my fellow members of council.
Thank you, John. And finally, Mr. Finer?
I have nothing to report, except that in response to the applicant for the sewer which I received today, I would, my question actually is to council, which is that since this person had previously been interviewed in 2015, did the council feel the need to re-interview?
No, but I think it's good policy to include the application in the borough packet ahead of time, so we all have the opportunity to review before voting. Like, I wouldn't want to vote tonight, but
Right.
No, I don't think another interview is necessary.
And as far as I'm aware, that it was a favorable interview, but I don't know if there's, this might be a question for Manager Paula, if there's a, any paperwork on the results of the interview from 2015, I think it was.
No, I don't believe back then they kept any kind of notes of the interviews, so it was just what I sent you.
So it's just this material? Okay.
Right.
I don't know if there's any other thoughts on that. Personally, I would like, given that it was a couple of years ago and different members of council, you know, I would appreciate the opportunity. I don't, if anybody else feels free to chime in on that.
So do, did all of council interview the applicant because it's sewer, not just community outreach? Or do you know?
I think I do remember
I think it was everybody, wasn't it?
All of council, yes. I do remember it was a full council interview because of the importance of that position, and so so I think we should probably then do that again for next, the next meeting.
Okay.
Any other thoughts on that? Right. Thank you. Anything else?
Not for me, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that closes council member reports. And before we get to the big item tonight, I'll just ask if there are any other general discussion items that members of council would like to raise. All right, and hearing none, we will move on to our vote to advertise the floodplain ordinance. Just by way of a little bit of background, this certainly has been a work in progress for quite some time. Probably getting on to two years now of kicking back and forth with revisions. But speaking broadly, the revisions that we have included tonight were the result of input from our borough professionals, conversations with both FEMA and PIMA representatives, and also with our Borough Planning Commission. I know in particular with the Borough Planning Commission, all of the recommendations that they provided were presented to FEMA and PIMA for feedback, and we included as many of those basically as we felt we could, but still operate within the limits of the community rating system as our overall dream goal has been to work towards securing those discounts on flood insurance premiums. So that being said, this revision would allow for some things that previously were not permitted in the floodplain, so we're proud that we're able to loosen a few things. Know that it is certainly, when you work on something of this scope, not something that is going to be perfect. But before we engage in further debate, for formality, I'll ask if there is a motion to advertise the ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Councilperson Thompson, seconded by Councilperson McCann. Do you have any discussion from council regarding the floodplain ordinance?
David, this is a procedural question. Is it possible to make, and I guess the term I use is minor, but minor amendments before we final vote on it, if that's something that people feel is necessary, or is, do you have to vote on what is advertised directly, or is it, can there be minor tweaks to it?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Griffin. I believe that some changes can happen, but they can't be major ones, is that?
So i- if the revisions are just for typos or, you know, minor adjustments, I think that's okay. But if there's any change to the actual substance, the copy that is voted to be advertised on tonight would have to be the same. I also note that if there is a change to the substance, it's also possible that we'd have to start back at square one and go back through the planning commission and PIMA and FEMA. So it just depends on, I guess, the extent of the revisions, but if it's an actual change to what's allowed in the floodplain, it would, it would probably trigger the process starting over.
All right, do we have any other further questions, discussion, comments from council?
I have one thing. I just, first, I just want, I appreciate the process that has happened here to look at it from both sides. Is that Jimmy okay?
Yes.
Okay, I heard a beep in here, okay. Just because, you know, obviously, our position is we want to keep the rating as good as it can be, but it doesn't mean that it's all one-sided, so I think it's great that you took a balanced approach here. And I guess my only question is, for the benefit of those who are here who might be wondering, this is being voted to be advertised, so basically, we really don't want to change it at this point. If you could just talk about to what extent there was, you know, public notification or involvement in this process, so that was any of the, the, any of these changes, had they taken into consideration input from the public that has come previously or throughout the process?
Right, absolutely. I don't unfortunately have a list of dates when all of those actions were taking place. I know this went at least two rounds in our Borough Planning Commission here, where they sent, we sent it to them, they sent us some changes, we sent back, came to us. We certainly have the rounded revisions with FEMA and PIMA. And I guess the most recent time that we discussed this as a body was probably in November. I know this was on the agenda as a discussion item at that time. Didn't really receive a whole lot of public feedback at that point, some during the meeting itself. But to my knowledge, nothing, you know, nothing concrete as a follow-up. But broadly speaking, I mean, this has, this has been debated quite a bit over the past two years.
Yeah, and there have been several opportunities for the public to participate, but if it shows through night, it's up to them. I just want to make sure that there were plenty of opportunities for them to participate and put their input, you know, before we send this off.
Right. And again, broadly speaking, this revision, there was a period in time maybe more than two years ago now, where we were sort of addressing piece by piece, different areas, the floodplain ordinance, I believe it started with some changes that were going to allow fences. There were a couple of other items, and the public opinion at that time, and council agreed with that, was instead of sort of doing spot revisions on this ordinance as they come up, that we would take a more comprehensive look at it to revise all in one shot. And as with anything, there are some pluses and minuses. Plus, I think we've probably done a better job doing it this way, looking at it all at once. The drawback was obviously that the stricter ordinance was in place for, you know, the duration of time that we were considering the changes now. So again, broadly speaking, this does loosen some restrictions, you know, to the extent that that was possible. Again, remaining compliant is important, not only for the discounts regarding CRS, but there is a broader relationship with FEMA that's in place. We have some pretty large pending grant numbers for home elevations. And, you know, we don't have final answers on that yet, but we certainly wouldn't want to do anything that would jeopardize our ability as a community to qualify for those elevation grants.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments, discussion from council?
You know, I just wanted to chime in to, because, I mean, it's something that even predated my serving on council, and we looked at it pretty closely in the Community Economic Development Committee, along with planning. Pete was there from planning, and we really talked over a lot of the provisions, and it seemed like there was a lot of work done before, you know, the draft that we were looking at got there. So it has been something, I want to give people credit for carrying this through from the previous council to this council, and the amount of conferring with PIMA and FEMA, that was really important work that was done too. So I, you know, from my perspective, and kind of looking at the ordinance, that a lot of good people looked at as before our council, people on the other council, and I know this has been an evolution over the last over two years, so it is something that has been looked at closely and by a number of different people, and certainly would like to hear, but I know there's been a lot of opportunity for public feedback too in the past, so.
You. I will, at this point, ask if there are any members of the public that wish to offer comment on the ordinance. Again, please use the raise hand function. We'll begin. It's on Mr. Carlson, your hand go up.
Yes, Don Carlson, 14 Creekview Lane. I just had a procedural question relative to this ordinance, because there were quite a few changes in it. Will there be something that will show once it's posted, so people will know what has changed in it, because it's a pretty big ordinance? Would there be something that highlights the changes, or be relying on the people to figure out what changed?
So I believe, and Paula, you may have this document. I know that we did have a version that sort of showed what had been stricken and what had been changed. Now, that's obviously not, we're going to advertise. What we advertise is not going to show that in a way that's easy to understand, but I think we could probably make that document available so that for someone that wants to really look at it and go through and see those changes, that would be the best way to do it, so we can, we can certainly dig that up and make it available.
I think it would be helpful, either that or a listing of what the major changes are, one or the other.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Dr. Promutter?
Thank you. Why hasn't this ordinance been posted on the Yardley Borough Facebook page or on the Yardley Borough website? Why do people have to request it if they to get this information? It's such an important thing. It affects more than half of our town. And personally, I think you should have mailed a copy of it to everyone, because not everybody has computer access. I think the transparency, again, is a huge problem, which is why I send out announcements to tell people about these meetings, because even when you send out announcements, you don't put this on the announcement. The other part, in terms of how this was done, Peter Gadotti was Chair of the Planning Commission, and he worked on this for years. He did tremendous job, and at the last meeting, which you also didn't inform the public that you were discussing it, he was treated extremely disrespectfully. You overrode his comments, somebody who lives in the flood, who's gone through the floods with the hired consultant. And I know that you think that the rating is the end-all and the be-all, but if you're not in compliance with other things, and you have corruption involved with FEMA, you're not going to get that rating anyway. So there's a lot of other issues involved with this. The monies that have gone through FEMA with this town, the millions of dollars that didn't trickle down to the people who were in the floods. There's a lot of issues. I know you want to pretend this is, we are the world and everything's fine, but there is corruption, and most of it centers around these FEMA grants. So I think people who live in the floodplain are entitled to get a copy of the ordinance before you vote on it, and I am requesting that you suspend this vote until you mail those out.
Thank you for your comment. Dr. Promutter, we have been over this many times. We'd spent several minutes discussing the number of opportunities that there have been for feedback and discussion for feedback and discussion on this ordinance. The draft ordinance has been just that, a draft, which means edits have been made, revisions have been made, things have been changing. The vote tonight is not a vote that makes this ordinance into law. It is a vote that advertises the ordinance. It sets out that final version that we intend to pass. But the whole point of the advertising is that it begins this period of time for anyone to look at word for word the ordinance that we're looking at enacting and provide council with feedback. So that's the period that we begin tonight. In order for constructive feedback to happen, right, we need to lock in a version, say, what is the version that we are actually debating? And what is the version that we are looking at passing? So that's what we're doing tonight. That's what the advertisement is. We're saying this is the version, and then there will be an opportunity through email, through scheduling meetings with us at the next council meeting, to offer comments on the ordinance that we're proposing.
Can I say something, David?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to bring up the point, because I think mailing, sending a mailing to everyone in the borough sounds really great, and we wish we could do that. But sending a mailing of this length to everyone in the borough would cost between twenty-five hundred and thirty-five hundred dollars, and that's just not money that we have every time we advertise an ordinance. But they are available to anyone without a computer who requests one from Borough Hall. But we take your point that we need to be a little more transparent about posting things online, and this will be posted once, if it passes through the vote to advertise.
Thank you. Further discussion from the public regarding the floodplain ordinance? Going once, going twice, and seeing none, I will then call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, motion carries seven to zero. I believe that concludes our scheduled business tonight. So unless another member of council has something they'd like to raise, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'd just like to say one thing. Just, you know, having seen some of the footage, I'm sure we've all seen from the indirection in the Capitol. One of the things that really struck me was watching Capitol Police protect themselves from violence while protecting the people who are attacking them from being injured from the violence that was occurring at the same time. And it really gave me tremendous, just a different perspective and appreciation for our law enforcement, for the chief and the department in Yardley, because I just can't imagine being in that situation.
Thank you. All right, so I won't call for it again. I heard a first and a second on motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.